Good evening, good afternoon, welcome to our Board of Education meeting. We'll begin as we always do with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming out and joining us tonight. It will be very busy if we're going to meet in a minute, sure. And we'll begin as we always do with our administrative remarks. And that would be Ms. Halligan, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Always good.
Good evening. I'm happy to report that the SEIU ratified their contract on 1/73 to 45. We want to thank Artie Campbell and Anne Marie Chalmers for instrumental in the ratification of the contract. And Victor and I will give you more details in executive session.
Sure.
Thank you.
Speaking of Victor, how are you doing tonight, Mr. Carlson?
I'm doing well, and yourself, Dr. Janboor?
Pretty good, I think. Let you know in about two hours.
I'd also like to acknowledge Artie Campbell and Anne Marie Chalmers for their collaboration in coming to an agreement on this contract. It was a lot of work, and we're happy that it's behind us now. Just one item for tonight. The executive state aid proposal was released last week, and it's projecting a very, very minimal increase of just $270,000 to the Brewster School District. And that represents a 1.7% increase net of building aid. We did have a significant increase in our building aid, but those funds are committed to pay down the debt that's associated with our capital improvement project, so it's already earmarked. We're hopeful that through the negotiations, the legislature is able to provide additional funding to help our students for next year. So stay tuned on that. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. And Ms. Gosh, how are you today?
Doing well, thank you. You may have heard, we have a tri-state visit coming up. We are eagerly awaiting our colleagues from the tri-state consortium who are arriving tomorrow for the first of their three-day visit. As I have mentioned previously, our guests will immerse themselves in the district, visiting classrooms, looking at evidence related to our essential questions, and conducting interviews from staff across and parents and students across the district. So I would just like to thank the members of our tri-state steering committee who spent countless hours preparing for this visit. That is Jim Tralor, McGee Horler, Tracy Villaverty, John Clark, Deb Romaine, Maggie Andriello, Frank Sambolin, Ashley Cunningham, and since the day she arrived here, Theresa Cherry. We sincerely appreciate the effort of the committee, and we look forward to a successful visit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gosh. And Dr. Herring, how are you?
How are you, Dr. Janboor? Board trustees. A little good information with regards to the achievements of three of our educators: Jessica McCann, counselor at the high school, Kate Simmons, counselor at the high school, and Jason Fittler, teacher here in HH Wells, obtaining National Board certification. It's a very prestigious award, which is considered gold standard for certification. Teachers have to go through a very rigorous process to obtain that. And we should be using them to conduct any kind of leadership, be involved in professional learning in other ways, because they have the skills to do it. So I want to congratulate those teachers for obtaining that certification. We have a visit with the board, field trip to CB Star to see Project Lead the Way on Friday. Okay. So that should be pretty exciting to see the development of that program. We'll be visiting Megan Johnson's classroom, Jackie Fago, and Steve Koschel to see what they're doing with students in terms of helping them to solve problems using critical thinking, collaboration, perseverance, and adaptability. So that's pretty awesome. And I want to thank our county executive, Odell, and legislator for coming tonight to talk to us about a very important topic, which is the opioid crisis in our county. So we look forward to speaking or listening to them shortly. And then we're also going to hear a wonderful presentation from our demo congress students from the high school. So thank you.
Thank you as well. So Mr. Carlson actually began the topic that I wanted to address tonight, but as always, Mr. Carlson is the professional and presents an even-handed approach to these things, and I appreciate that. I'm not going to do that. It's my 18th year, I'm leaving in June, and I'm going to be real blunt. There's no reason not to be blunt. It's an outrage. Your governor is asking for $796 million in state aid increase. That sounds like a lot of money, and believe me, it really, really is. I get that, okay? But other responsible people in the state differ. So the Educational Conference Board, which is bipartisan, it's owing to no side of the aisle, it's concerned with what's right for kids and the education of those kids, they're asking for $2 billion dollar increase. Look at this now, $796 million compared to $2 billion. Oh, by the way, the Board of Regents is asking for substantially more than this also. So is the New York State School Boards Association, and you can go online and pick up this whole edition, and you'll get a lot more facts and figures to substantiate this argument. The reason why it's tiresome and boring is because every year we start off with this ridiculous low-ball number, and then we go into a political dance, and then sometime, usually on the eve before it all has to get adopted, it gets adopted. And it's substantially better than it is right now, but it will not change the fundamental flaw here in New York State, and that is, by Constitution, New York is different. We guarantee, as a constitutional right, that every child here shall have a sound, basic education. We fought that fight once and won, and the courts upheld it. We're fighting that fight again, and so far, it's being upheld. This is crazy. Why do we have to keep doing this and to this degree? Our kids need our help in more ways than we can ever count in a school budget. We shouldn't have to waste this kind of time to begin the year in February with this stupid dance. Let's go to the chase, let's get the kids the funding they need, and let's get on with serious matters, like we will be discussing tonight, thanks to the county executive. Speaking of students, I think we have Julie and Julia here tonight? Yes?
Yeah, I'll just sort of bring her to the general.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Terrific.
Okay. Hi, we just want to thank you for having us. So this is Democratic Congress, and we like to call ourselves the bridge between the administration and the students. So this is Ying, our co-president, she's got the jokes down and the details.
This is Julie, our other co-president, and she loves doing the busy work that no one else likes doing. This is Elizabeth, she's our PRO and our pro photographer.
This is Andrew, he's our treasurer and our treasurer, he's always the first one to volunteer.
This is Erin, our youngest member and also our most well-spoken. This is Julia, she is our microphone, she's always willing to shout across the room. Doesn't really need this, but we'll give it to her anyway.
Thanks.
So the issues we mainly care about this year are discrimination, disunity, and language barrier. We focus mainly on those and devoted a lot of time to that, so.
So we understand that as adults, as the Board of Ed, you guys have your own separate issues and concerns. We wanted to bring to you our perspective as students. Although Brewster is not this crazy, incredibly racist town, we do walk down the hallway and hear a lot of discriminatory comments, whether they're racist, or xenophobic, or homophobic. And we've been working this year to bring attention to that and lessen that. What we mean by disunity is sometimes between even this school and the high school. It doesn't feel like one big community. It doesn't have as much sphere as we wish it did. We want people to be so proud to be from Brewster, and so we're working towards that. And the language barrier, pretty self-explanatory, but this year we had a great influx of Spanish-speaking students, some who speak no English, and it's really incredibly difficult to make friends and be successful in the area where you don't share the common language. So we're working to make sure it's easier, and so everyone has a safe place at Brewster.
So in order to actually target the concerns that Julie and Erin just listed, we first had to garner where student concerns actually lie. And how we did that was in the first two weeks of school, we actually sent out an online survey to the entire student body in the high school, asking them questions like, "Do you feel your concerns are addressed in the past school year?" And what can we do as student leaders to actually address those concerns? And here's an infographic on like some percentages that the students actually applied with. And the survey actually helped us identify problems like the disunity that Erin mentioned and the discriminatory comments that's evident in our school.
So after identifying those issues through the surveys, we decided to start tackling the issues. So we went into many planning sessions after school for many weeks on how we could tackle the issues. And we came up with these things called conventions, which we could discuss with students, the problems, and then discuss how we could solve those problems. So we had student conventions, and we went into a faculty meeting one day, and we talked with the faculty and had like almost like a faculty convention, and we were able to discuss the solutions with the whole school community.
So what Andrew just said is a convention. So we had a lot of planning, and we pulled together about 100 people, I think at our first one. We've had multiple ones, one with ELL students, other students, and the faculty. And we had large group discussions to listen to personal stories and to get to know each other, and we had small group discussions where we got to know each and every one of them personally. We heard stories, people that normally wouldn't talk to each other in school got to know each other, and it was really great. It was an amazing day, we learned so much, I heard things that I've never heard before. So that really helped us gauge an idea of what we needed to work on this year.
We decided that the best way to run this convention was by making it student-driven. This would make it so that every student felt comfortable having an open and honest discussion. And also, we thought that this would make students more receptive to what they were hearing. So we decided to train student facilitators to run the convention. They would lead the small groups, helping shy students discuss, and also just facilitating conversation and making sure that it ran smoothly.
So here are some photos from our convention, taken by Elizabeth here.
Going into the convention, we weren't sure what to expect. We were worried that maybe conversation would be awkward, or it would be difficult to start it. But we were really surprised to see that people came together and spoke to people they'd never spoken before, and everyone was really respectful of the different perspectives they were hearing.
It was interesting, actually, at our first convention, we had a lot of small group discussions, and we had one group of boys who were talking about kneeling during the pledge and discussing and debating that. And then another group of people who were sharing stories, like personal anecdotes, like an ELL student girl who was talking about how, as she had come earlier, and she was talking about the division between like her as an older ELL student and the new ELL students who only speak Spanish, so that was really interesting to hear.
So at the end of each of our convention, we decided to establish like a feedback loop with the rest of our participants, because we don't want our conventions to be one-time thing. We want our students to leave the convention feeling empowered and to continue that feeling empowered. So the way we did that was to send out more surveys and collected even more data, and asking about questions on how we can approve as demo board. From those suggestions, we were able to tweak the format of our conventions to make it more effective in the future.
Going into the school year, we noticed that our big goal was we needed to become more visible. If you would have asked any student in the hallway, they'd never heard of demo and they didn't know what it was. So we, through these conventions, we really got well-known. If you walk around, kids usually have heard of demo, they know what we do. We have a classroom that you can join, that the school has, I mean, it's become a great help. And then on top of that, we've really had a great relationship with the administration, which has been a huge help. So we wanted to thank you, Mrs. Horler, and that's been super helpful.
So just some of our future plans. We'd like to have probably more conventions, but the next one is probably going to be a larger convention where we merge the groups that we had before. Because at our first convention, a big concern was that there weren't many ELL students, and they weren't being represented, and it was voluntary, and those people wanted to have conversations with different students, but there was less participation there. So we'd like to merge the ELL convention group with the earlier ones and even more people. Hopefully, a day-long convention. Another thing that came out of it, I think this was brought up at both conventions, having flags like in the school hung somewhere to represent the diverse cultures that we represent. And we actually, as Julia mentioned on our Google classroom, we put out an announcement asking for flag recommendations that people could have a say in it, and we got about 30 flag recommendations, and we're actually getting those. So thank you to Mrs. Horler for that, too. So yeah, those are going to be hung up pretty soon. And also, we have more announcements and flyers in Spanish now. We have a senior bilingual student, Noelle Castro, doing a Spanish installment of announcements every single day, so that's great.
Before we left, we just wanted to share this one quote with you, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has," by Margaret Reed. And this is kind of what we are trying to do here, just trying to be a small group of people, trying to get larger, just to change our little world in Brewster. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it. Moving along and keeping the pace, we're now going to focus on the New York opioid cost recovery litigation and goals in Putnam County. And we're thankful to have Ms. Mary Ellen Odell here to help us with this discussion. Welcome. Yeah, come on up.
Thank you, Dr. Janboor and Dr. Piedmont, and the trustees of the Brewster School Board, and of course, to all the parents, for allowing me to visit with you folks tonight.
Interesting.
Certainly, if that's not the reason why we stay out late in a cold January, right, and why we do what we do, it says it all there. Before we talk about what I wanted to speak about primarily, then I have a few other items that I just want to quickly touch on. To what these folks, these powerful, beautiful, young adults have to say about diversity, I would invite the school board and the parents to encourage the children the next time Putnam County hosts its naturalization ceremony, to please come, because that is embracing diversity in real time, in a real American valued environment. It's very, very moving, and it really does speak to the heart of what America has been built on, and that is embracing the diversity. And everything that we bring is special, regardless of what corner of this world you come from. It's really, really, I think, a wonderful educational opportunity and a spiritual and empowering moment as well. Just, you can call my office and find out with the calendar. The county clerk, Michael Bartolati, who actually is a resident of Southeast, has brought this program forward, and it's very, very valuable. So I encourage you all to do that. This light is so bright. It's almost like distracting. I'm going to just move up here if that's all right. Because I brought an agenda, I don't have real talking points. I'm going to speak to all of you, and please feel free to jump in at any moment so that we can really have a very good, comprehensive conversation. The Putnam County government consists of, and it's a charter government, so there's myself as the county executive, and then there is the legislature. It's a nine-member board. You're fortunate in this town to have two legislators representing you. One of whom is here tonight, that's legislator Paul Yonkey, and legislator Joe Castellana, who unfortunately had a prior family commitment. Families always first. It's also nice to note that Joseph Castellana was also the chair, the new chair of the legislature. So he's a wonderful, compassionate individual, and both his daughters attend the school district. So your voices will be very well represented in county government as we move forward. Several months ago, I was approached as being the newly-elected president of the New York State Association of Counties. There are 62 counties in our great state, and I have the honor and privilege of serving as the president this year. And I was asked what were the issues that I felt were paramount and important to everyone in New York State. And of course, being a parent myself, and being a leader in an elected office, and having spent quite a bit of time involving myself in children's sports activities and veterans' issues and seniors' issues, I have seen one very common denominator, the thread that pulls all of us into the same conversation easily, and it's substance abuse and addiction. And it has really devastated, as we all know. And we can speak to that personally, we can speak to that at home, we have seen it on the job, we've seen it in newspapers, we've seen it in everywhere you turn, you see another example of the tragedy and the crisis of substance abuse and addiction. And I have taken this and a few other topics that I think impact the county specifically, and our county specifically, my role as county executive, and a few other items that I think are important education. Dr. Janboor, as you so passionately noted, is also on our list of important topics. And I spoke to the legislature, and I said, "Look, we have a wonderful opportunity here to teak on something that I've been following through my read-ages, Wall Street Journal being my primary go-to." And it comes from a place, if any of you are familiar with the tobacco settlements of about 20 years ago, where an individual, an attorney from down south, decided to engage in an action litigation against the tobacco companies, saying that your product, your distribution, your marketing has ruined and actually destroyed personal and family and lives, and you have driven the cost of life itself upwards because of the medical care and all of that that entails because of the smoking. And they were very successful. And to this day, Putnam County still receives incremental payments as a result of that settlement, proceeds going towards making sure that smoking cessation and all of the marketing opportunities to make sure that cigarette, the habit itself extinguishes itself as we move on, that was the best use for the funding. So when you step back and you think about it, and you think to yourself, "Well, why wouldn't we take that same approach when we're talking about the pharmaceutical companies, commonly referred to as Big Pharma?" And there's been many cases across the United States where municipalities have engaged in litigation, and some of the pharmaceutical companies themselves automatically settled rather than engage in litigation. Some of the settlements have involved just the promise of best, better practices, acknowledging the fact that they have to market specifically to the medical community and not so much to the, you know, making pharmaceuticals and drugs on the TV commercials look so wonderful and glamorous, and, you know, they're always in a field of flowers, and they're always happy and in love, and it's just not the case, right? That's not reality. But that's what they present. So I presented this resolution to the legislature, and we are very, very fortunate in this county that we have a nine-body board of legislators who are family-oriented, and they get it. And it didn't take much to convince them to allow me to retain counsel, so that Putnam County stands with many other counties, but we stand on our own two feet and tell the Big Pharma that what you have done to this society for profit has hurt this county financially and socially, emotionally, and we want restitution. We demand restitution. Now, across the country, different approaches have been made about who exactly they're suing. Even in New York State, there's a divide. Half the counties are only suing the manufacturers, some are only suing the distributors. Putnam County is suing both. We have engaged action in both the manufacturers and the distributors. I believe, and I tracked it federally, as of two weeks ago, I happen to have been in Washington, DC, when this came down, a judge has ruled that all of the federal cases, ours is a state case, and there's a reason for that, which I'll get to, all of the federal cases will be consolidated into one action. The case will be heard in court in northern Ohio. And the judge said this, I'm paraphrasing, he said to both the plaintiff and the defendant, "Do not, do not either of you file for a motion to dismiss, because it will be denied. We will hear this case, and we will make a settlement. Too many people are dying, too many families are being destroyed. We will settle this case." That was a very powerful statement for a judge to make. I would expect in New York State that we will hear the same response from the courts as well. So we're enthusiastically optimistic. We're sad that we have to do this, right? We do it in the memory of so many lives, some this age, some our age. It's an opportunity that we could not let pass by, and it's an opportunity that I say to you, it's not about government, it's not about living, you know, in a silo. This is about the people, the 100% of the residents of Putnam County standing up in this lawsuit. So I wanted to thank legislator Yonkey for joining me tonight, and the legislator in sum total. And I will keep you posted as we move forward and keep you in touch in what, and when, and how the settlement will roll through. In the interim, our counsel may come to the school districts independently to ask for data that will support our case, which, of course, they will follow all of the confidentiality rules. But anything and everything that we can remit, submit, will wait our case. I think we can only do better by as much information as we can in making sure that this settlement goes the way it should go. Whether the restitution comes in a monetary form, which if it does, we will return that funding back to the not-for-profits. I will not use it, as some previous administrations have used the settlement money to offset budget costs. I will return that money right back into the not-for-profit providers out there, who I consider are the boots-on-the-ground individuals who are out there fighting the fight for all of us. I'm going to get back to the reason why we engaged in the state litigation. We engaged in the state litigation and not a federal because we ourselves would because we ourselves would have control of the settlement itself. And that was critical to me. I did not want a settlement to happen and have that money go pooling somewhere else, and then it has to be discussed, or people have to be paid, or people have to be lobbied to make sure that we get our fair share. So we made the decision to engage in the action standalone so that we are in the driver's seat when the day comes that there is a settlement. So I'll take any questions on that? Yes, ma'am?
How can I help you? I haven't, no, I have very little experience unfortunately, so I would not care about that.
Well, I will tell you this. We are, Putnam County, I sent a request down to the chairman of the legislature, Mr. Castellano, asking him if he and the chairwoman of the Health Committee, legislator Barbara Scuchimara from Philistown, would put together a task force, Substance Abuse Opioid Task Force. In my administration over the last six years, I've tried to embrace this issue and tried to engage the community, and I refer to this as "our one army on the war on addiction" in Putnam County. And this task force will be comprised of many members of my administration, Dr. Neshwa from the Health Department. We have some other legislators, a lot of our not-for-profit providers. But I certainly extend the invitation, open the invitation to anyone in the community who'd like to assist in what I would refer to "that one army on the war on addiction", the boots-on-the-ground, the infantry.
I can maybe talk to you?
Yeah, you can contact my office, and I'm sure anyone here would be able to give you my information.
And what we're doing is we have to do this. I've seen the waiting. We have a few of the dealers. If we don't get them, where...
Well, that's, you know, a good point. I saw Deputy Supa outside, and I used to see our deputy in New York Sports Club early in the mornings in Carmel before I hit the office. And I was wondering where he was, and here's my answer. He's here. True story, okay? And this relates to the conversation, if anyone should like to. It's off the agenda, but certainly always available for topic, about school resource officers and the importance of school resource officers and the importance of the partnership that the county and the schools, the school administration, continue to make sure that we continue in that program. The school resource officers, what they offer is invaluable in information, which gets transferred back to the respective policing agencies. Sometimes it may be the New York State Trooper. Sometimes it may be our local Sheriff's Department. If you're in a township that has a local PD, which Stat East does not, but the village of Brewster does, you know, anything to support that information to get the dealers. We've had some tremendous success in some huge drug busts lately, you've seen. One most recently was marijuana, which we consider a gateway drug. Then the... those individuals, those boots-on-the-ground not-for-profit providers are very interested in the issue, the topic of marijuana and the sales of it to students.
The heroin too.
Well, that they eventually get there. I mean, we've talked about, we have our medication take-back day programs in the county, which we've expanded and expanded on. You know, how many times will children, young adults, say their addiction began because they found a prescription left in a medicine cabinet? They really didn't know what it was. Somebody in school said, "Hey, you know, that's pretty cool, and they wanna be cool." And before you know it, that there's a, you know, a bunch of these prescription pills running around. So we've been very, very, very on the offense about making sure that everyone understands they have to be responsible for those prescription pills. New legislation Senator Murphy put through up in Albany about reducing the amount, the days of prescription for certain pain management now. It has a seven-day cap. I think everyone here can tell you, you've either had a tooth pulled, a root canal, a broken bone, and you've come home with a 90-day prescription. And you take maybe three or four days, and then you put it back in the cabinet. So, you know, we're approaching this, again, the one army on the war on addiction is approaching this from as many angles and assets that we have, all of the resources they have. There is no better resource than listening. There is no better resource than making sure that we're communicating and, of course, you know, never deny that it can happen to your own children. My mother was a very wise woman, and she always said, "The minute you hear yourself saying..." "Oh, not my..." No, no, not my kid did that. She goes, "You're pretty much, you're pretty much jinx yourself." But it can be, you know, it can be. Denial is a powerful drug, I'll always say, in itself. You know, we do the best we can here, but life has changed so much. Even from when I was coming over here to light the bonfire from Carmel High School for when the Bears and the Rams were the actual... What do you call it? What do they call it?
Rivalries.
No, 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 no. Rivalries. Right. Back in the 70s, Brewster and Carmel, that was the real rivalry, rivalry. But things have changed, right? I mean, you know, you've got the social media, cell phones, the peer pressure, the advertising, the drug companies. I mean, it's really overwhelming. I certainly know as a parent how overwhelmed we are with all of this coming at us. So we can only imagine what these young children, as bright as they may be, it's still a lot for them to, I think, absorb. It's up to us as parents, but clearly, we all know this, they spend the majority of their time in the schools, which is why it's so important that we make sure that we share all the assets and resources that we can.
My second job is in a line too, as a tech, okay? And they come in, and they're allowed to buy one pack of ten, for no prescription. You said, "Okay." I cringe every time someone goes to put on a hat. You can tell.
Yeah.
I kind of understand the concept there, some of that, you know, the hate and this and that. But to me, it's like a neighborhood. Is there anything I can do?
Clearly, you know, again, all of these are good topics for conversation with the task force. We're looking right now at anything and everything that we can do to assist in stopping the drugs from coming into this county, clearly, educating the children from knowing to make better, wise decisions. And then, of course, you know, as parents, we have to be able to understand, see the signs, know the signs. If you see something, say something. You know, that can be applied to pretty much anything these days, not just, you know, security and terrorism. But the best thing I think we can all do is to just not take our eye off the ball, as you obviously are not, and to just make sure that any time you have an opportunity to share and part a story or an idea, to just continue in doing that. It all adds up in the end. My mother also used to say, "If you take care of the little things, the big things take care of themselves." So, you know, these are... These are all things that we're on the alert for too.
And it's not even required like to check ID? Like, it's usually like, "No, you can check ID." I'll check ID every time.
So anyone else have any questions about the opioid litigation? Or... I do also want to share that we have a wonderful program in addition called Drug Treatment Court, where it's an opportunity for an offender to avoid a state prison sentence if they enter into a contract. And it's about a two-year program. It's very stringent, it's very strict. And there is a Drug Treatment Court graduation. Judge James Reitz hosted. Putnam County funds it now because the state defunded it. And we said, "There's just no way. We're not gonna have this program." There's 100 and something in the pipeline on a routine basis of individuals who have gotten in trouble, jammed up for whatever reason. And we feel it's better to give them a second chance, keep them in their families, and let them learn there's a better way in life than addiction. And those Drug Treatment Court graduations, I would again extend this invitation. Take some of your... Take your best and your brightest, and take those who you think might benefit from it and attend one of those graduations. They're, again, they're very powerful moving, these stories of people. They're on the brink of sometimes 10-year sentences in the state, and they enter into this contract. And they stand there, and they thank their families, and they thank their loved ones. Their families are overwhelmed with the transformation of their loved one by having gone through this process. Recidivism has dropped to single digits when it was in almost 30% for people. So, you know, Putnam County, you know, to live here, you have to be proud of the place you live in because we've really taken on some tough, tough issues head-on and have really made a difference in this county. And you should all be proud of your roles in it as leaders and as people that, you know, give a darn.
I can do one more.
So, is it alright if I... Did I eat up all my time here? Can I...
Sure, if I need one minute.
Sure, a few more. So Tilly Foster Farm is a county-owned property, and it's a beautiful destination. We call it a gateway property. It's right off 84 Metro North is there. And the gates are open. We have a beautiful restaurant now called Tilly's Table. We're partnering with Bosie's there. They have a special program there, teaching culinary arts to these wonderful, wonderful kids. And we're expanding the programs all the time. We're looking to introduce organic farming. We're looking to introduce some fun adult programs, like if you wanna learn how to make wine, if you wanna learn how to bake artisanal bread, if you wanna grow a strawberry patch. These are all the kinds of fun things. Farmers market, different things that we think the community should want to do on their, on our downtime, whatever downtime, whatever time that may be. If you're familiar with the Putnam County Golf Course, then you know how much fun a county facility like that can be to bring the community together, to enjoy good food, good music, and get to know your neighbors and be proud of Putnam County as different folks coming in from Connecticut and Denver. So Tilly Foster Farm is a work in progress for starting our first full calendar year of events. And I was approached by a young lady who's from Putnam County, who's spent most of her career as a decorator. She has friends who are set designers, and they have come up with this concept of introducing, I believe it's an eight-stage, interactive Alice in Wonderland event. So it's an educational, but also recreational opportunity. After the... You go through the eight different stages of Alice in Wonderland. It ends in a tea party. Lovely. And the slides and what she has shown me is it looks to be something that's really special, really extraordinary, and very unique, and I think very perfect for Tilly Foster. It's geared towards children, but I know that there's plenty of adults out there that are gonna really enjoy taking advantage of the opportunity to do this. It'll kick off in the spring in about six weeks. The tickets will be sold in incremental time so you don't have to worry about crowding. But I would really encourage the school and everyone here to keep a lookout for Tea with Tilly, Tea with Alice and Tilly. And I think that it's really gonna just enhance that beautiful Putnam County-owned property and hopefully will continue in different programs like that. Yeah. And I'm gonna just close on one invitation as well. Governor Cuomo, speaking of which, has mandated that the counties find ways to reduce the tax burden on our taxpayers. That is laugh-out-loud because in this county, your county, your tax bill represents 9% of your whole bill, which is not only something that we should be proud of here in Putnam, but we are the lowest in all of New York State, 62 counties. We've been sharing services. We're proud to have made wonderful partners with people in government. And I am extending an invitation to the school districts because of the reduction in the aid that you so noted, Dr. Jan Moore, tonight. Most of which drives our costs are mandates. Schools are not exempt from mandates. You have as many mandates as leaders in school government administration as government does. I'm sure that there's common ground. There's always been the conversation of consolidating superintendents. It happened in Fairfax, Virginia. It's happening all over. That's not what I'm talking about tonight. That conversation will be had on another committee at another time in another place. I'm here to talk about something very simple, something that's environmentally, I think, good for us here in Putnam County. It's good for our tax dollars because it can help reduce equipment costs. Environmentally, it can reduce the amount of salt that's going into our water table. Putnam County and the legislature are looking into building a truck wash facility. Not very sexy, not very glamorous. This is when you can really fall asleep. But it does matter because we can show that we are working together, the schools and government are working together to reduce the burden to the taxpayers. I'd rather see the money go back to the children than go into a new vehicle because that vehicle wasn't maintained because of snow and salt and ice and all of that. So I am inviting the school district, this is my first stop on my visits to all school districts, to participate in the shared services dialogue with us. I'm not inviting you into a hornet's nest. I'm not saying that you're going to have to defend why you have your own superintendent. That's not for me. But to think about the other areas, back-office functions, different services that we both provide that maybe we can work together. I understand the resistance of the conversation of shared services. I understand because it means somebody's gonna lose their job. Somebody's going to take a hit for this. That's not where I think we should start the conversation. The conversation should be about where can we save money so we can put the money back into the programs, back into where the real value is, where the real bang for our buck is. And that's in those kids, right there. Simple. So with that, I wish you all a very happy, healthy, safe new year, Dr. Jan Moore. For the half of the year that you're with us, I want to thank you for your... How many is she, 16?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Who's counting?
Eighteen. You are. And I wish you the very best if I don't see you ahead of time. So thank you all very, very much.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Things to discuss. Thanks for coming out. And now we're going to review our capital project budget, fields repair, and paving update from KGND Architects. They're going to be discussing the update on our baseball and softball field repairs. We had an athletic field renovation committee meeting this past Thursday. These plans, which are attached to the agenda, were presented to the committee, recommended by them, and are being recommended to the board for your approval. And with that, I will turn it over to Kathleen Snyder from Inside Engineering.
Currently on our agenda in our task list, we had our field survey crew was in the field. They took 400 spot shots at each athletic field, both the softball and the baseball, so that we could get accurate elevations of the issues which have been outlined up to this point. We now have that digitized and in our files. Because of that, we've been able to begin the site design, both the repair of the fields as well as any potential amenities. As I was mentioning, we had a very successful meeting with the Brewster Sports Foundation and was able to talk about part of that scope of work. In reference to the DEP, which has been one of the larger issues, we have three SWPs, which we are scheduled to have completed within the next three weeks. Barring no complications with standard timelines that we've experienced in the past, we are still on track for construction this summer.
Wonderful. That's good news.
And that's about the extent of our, unless any other things?
Well, thank you.
Any questions?
Ms. Green? All right. I'm thinking, okay. Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay. Now you put your track flaps on, we get down to the action items. Action item number one concerns the approval of schematic design for the Athletic Fields Renovation Project, that's timely. Mr. Carlson?
Yes, as Kathleen mentioned, it's not, nothing really glamorous. It's a, it's a field repair that will be graded properly so pitch well and drain well. And that's what's being presented this evening.
It's the beginning. Thank you.
The design has been in compliance with all safety standards. We're also in compliance with the National High School Federation for our dimensioning for both the softball and the baseball field. We've been working with the athletic directors, making sure that all of our dimensions are in compliance.
Very, very important. Thank you for that and a comment.
Excellent. Okay, so we'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of this important action item. Thank you Diane and Carrie. Catch you next time, Glenn and Sonia. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion passes 7-0. Action item number two concerns the approval of tax refunds and approval of budget amendment number seven, Mr. Carlson?
Yes, these refunds have been reviewed and recalculated by our treasurer, reviewed by attorneys, and are being recommended for payment. The budget transfer refers to a portion of the reimbursements that apply to taxes from prior years, for which we've previously established a tax reserve.
Sounds important. Okay, good. So I have Glenn and Sonia. And questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion passes 7-0. Action item number three concerns the disposal of district property, namely computer equipment. Mr. Carlson?
Yes, as described in Mr. Trailer's memo, there's a number of, or I should say, there are a number of devices at Garden Street Elementary School which have been replaced through our Smart Schools bond. This equipment, as he describes in his memo, is obsolete and we are recommending its disposal in accordance with Board Policy 6900, disposal of district property.
Okay, so we'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of this action item. I'm looking down yonder there, okay, got it. Mary Kay, Kristen. Questions or comments from the board concerning this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Last but not least is action item number four concerning the approval of policies first read. Are you ready, Ms. Gosh? 1120 and 4821.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Jamboor. These two policies are a result of the quarterly updates from everyone Bosse's. They have been reviewed by a legal counsel and our policy committee and we submit policies 1120 and 4821 to you for our first read.
Now, there's only two here, does that mean we're coming down to the bottom of the list? Don't suck love. Okay, we'll take a motion, please, to your consideration of these two policies first read only now. Thank you Diane, thank you Carrie. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion passes 7-0. Move on to consent agenda. You have had a chance to review the minutes. We'll take a motion, please, for the approval of the minutes. Thank you, Mary Kay, Kristen. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? The minutes are adopted 7-0, actually, the whole consent agenda. Okay. Remarks? What remarks? What have you guys been up to lately? Hi, Mary Kay.
How are you, all the way down here? Couple of things, there is the, with the budget proposal coming out from Governor Cuomo's office, now we're in the budget season and every year, the Westchester Putnam School Board Association holds their legislative forum where you get to chat with our local legislators. That is February 26th.
Yep.
I'm hoping, I can't make it, so I'm hoping a couple of our board members can get there. There's a few things on the budget. I was sort of joking with Victor a little bit ago, I spent an hour and a half this afternoon at a NISBA webinar, learning about the governor's proposed budget. And while it was an hour and a half of my life I won't get back, it was, it was very eye-opening. One of the biggest takeaways that I got was the proposed, and Victor, please interrupt me if I'm getting this wrong, it was a proposed 2019, 2020 school year, 2% cap on reimbursement for transportation Bosse's and building, am I getting that right?
Yes, the aid categories that are expense-based aids.
Expense-based aids, thank you.
So you have to spend it in order to get reimbursement and they want to cap it.
Okay, and then one of the biggest concerns about that was if you voted, if you had a vote for building, you know, you're doing construction, yeah, when if anyone's doing that, and we've got the approval of the voters, this 2% cap on our expenses might kind of throw a wrench into, I'm saying this right, it's going to mess this up a lot that they're putting on. And one of the other ways, something like transportation. So if we spend, say, a dollar in 2008, and they take your expenses from 2018, 2019, if you spend a dollar on transportation, this 2% tax cap would mean they'll only help us in the next year when the budget comes, one dollar and two cents. Doesn't matter what we spend, they're going to cap the expense reimbursement only 2%. Doesn't matter what we spend. So that was something that, when we meet with our legislatures, just to remind them of what's really being spent, especially the building, that's something that's already got voter approval, we can't really control that. So that was a big thing. So, the 26th is the legislative forum. Also coming up, Dr. Jamboor, you know, Capitol Conference?
Yep.
Next week, I think it's coming up too. So, we have a couple of opportunities to see this. And the webinar is free for board members, so if anyone wants to go on the NISBA website and spend time. It really was informative, it wasn't, you know, I joke and say it was an hour and a half of my life, but it was, I really took a lot out of it, they really explained things plainly.
Important stuff, important time of the year. Other comments from the board?
I'm, sorry. No, I was just going to say, I am able to go on 26th next month. If anyone else would like to join me, there's kind of strength in numbers.
Yep.
So, if anyone wants to go, I think it's in Valhalla, I can't remember exactly where, is that?
Valhalla's usually the rear center.
Oh, it's Purchase, yeah, Purchase, sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, it's always Purchase, that's right.
Yeah, it's always Purchase, that's right. And I think it starts at 6:00 PM, so if anyone either wants to meet there, drive down together. Again, I think there's some strength in numbers so they hear of people saying the same things over and over.
I was just going to add, since we're on the topic of the best, so the Capitol Conference is, it's actually the Monday, Tuesday before our next meeting. And that's the time to go to Albany and meet with the legislators. We have appointments that are made, we have Sunday is kind of a little bit of a training day, informative day, then that Monday are our appointments on the Hill.
On the Hill, yep.
So, maybe we can just shoot the rundown and see if we can, maybe we can head up to that. And then I also would be willing to do this year, so we can show me the world. He goes to DC every year for the National School Boards Association, doing the same thing in DC. So, yeah, that's the weekend before that, so a lot of advocacy still working the next few weeks from everywhere.
Good for you, Scott.
The other thing I just want to add is BF, British Education Foundation, had their talent show and it was great. The kids are awesome. It's really great to see the kids from every school have an opportunity to, you know, show off their talents. And I know many administrators were there as well, and the teachers watching the students. So, just want to say that was a great time, I know the gala will be the next thing on the list for them. I think that's it for now.
Okay, sounds good. Public remarks and information, the floor is yours, ladies and gentlemen, whatever's concerning you. Hi, Ms. Green.
Hi. In the essence of time, and since I can speak loud, I'll just come down here. And I just wanted, as a representative of the Brewster Sports Foundation, to thank the board for the approval of the plans for the baseball and the softball field, and also to acknowledge Victor and his collaboration and coordination of the Athletic Field Committee to move this and fast-track it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments in the public? Seeing none, oh, I've got this sense that it's coming from this side.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for a second session. We have a little bit of work ahead of us. Would you first have a meeting with our attorney regarding the sale of Garden Street? Updates with that? And then we have our training, yes. Yes.
Excellent. That's going to keep us busy, okay? And a motion, and a second date, all those in favor, you have no choice. See you two weeks from now.